Okay, may I please have a stand and I have someone that's going to do the pledge?
Yes.
Okay. Here. Need another one. Okay, there you go. Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and duly public for which is end. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. That's what we're all about. Yes. Okay. Um. Where's my? Okay. Fact finding hearing conducted by administrative review in case number eighteen dash nineteen slash zero one. Motion by board member R. Hurst and seconded by board member Vern V. Snotterly. Panel recommendation. Student number two-two-two-one-four shall be expelled from the schools of the district for the remainder of the fall and spring semesters two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. It is further recommended that student two-two-two-one-four may enroll at Orstemberg High School at the beginning of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Public communication agenda and non-agenda items. Any person wishing to comment on agenda or non-agenda items may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name. It would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to three minutes. California law prohibits the school board from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the board. Per Board policy BB nine-three-two-three, individual speakers may be allowed three minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item. The board may limit the time, may limit the total time for public input on each seven to twenty minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask for that additional person to speak only if they have something new to add. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Mr. Pruitt?
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I do want to talk about, uh, what Orstum has been through and as well as the, um, the Taylor family this, this last week. That call that we got last Monday is not a call as a principal. I F'led again. It was about noon on Monday afternoon and I got a call from Officer Lopez and, uh, had I called him back, I figured, because he's a good friend of mine as well, so I figured, what, what is he trying to do tonight? What does he want to go do? And, uh, and I called him back and he says, we had a, one of our students take their life. And being able to share this really is, is because the Taylor family has been so gracious. Um, they've actually allowed us to share the information so that it might help others. So, um, so when I, as I share this information, it's not to glorify anything, it's to get the information out there because people have questions. Um, as soon as that happened, I gave Mr. Phil Pot a call, I called my admin team and with, within just a few hours on a Monday afternoon, we had about fourteen people drop everything they were doing with their family to get together so that we can serve our students, uh, the students and families of Orstemberg High School. At about three-thirty, Nurse Bernice and I, uh, visited the Taylor family and, and basically we wanted to hear from them, what they need from us. And, um, and I'm not sure, so sure that they really knew what they needed, but they did give us permission to share with our staff what, what happened, so again, so they can, that we can help our staff, help our students. Um, during the meeting at four P M., we reviewed our, um, our suicide prevention toolkit, which Ms. Sharp actually finished on Friday night, the weekend before, and it will be coming to you for approval soon. So this is, this was kind of, um, through, and again, a lot of the work that Jessica House has done, unfortunately, there's, there's certain things you do and certain things you don't do. And we wanted to make sure we did what was right so that it didn't lead to more. And we wanted to make sure we didn't, um, create a situation that, that made it worse for others. So, um, so during that meeting, we had, uh, learning director and counselor from the high school, counselor, uh, and two teachers, the teachers that, uh, this, that Michelle was mostly involved with, and that is Band and Drama. We had our vice, vice principal, principal, campus supervisor, superintendent, chief of police, SRO, school secretary, our mental health clinician, and I believe I said, school nurse. So we were all there trying to figure out, how can we best serve our students? Um, we created a list, first of all, immediately, of all the people that have close contacts to Michelle. We wanted to make sure we touched base with them that day. And there were a couple that we made contacts with right away so that again, that, um, there was no doubt in their mind or made up story or rumors getting to them. We wanted to make sure they heard right away what the facts were. And again, going through, we, we do target solutions every year as, as a staff, and one of those target solution things is suicide prevention and what things you should do and what things you shouldn't do. And it's very important that the truth gets out there first. Um, a lot of times with suicides, you don't want to talk about it. You don't glamorize it, but you call it what it is. And, um, and that was important that we did that. And again, with the family's permission, we did that. The next morning, we made sure that, uh, staff was there early and on campus to be there for students. We also had a meeting at seven fifteen A M. for every staff member to kind of update them where we are and what our steps were. Um, we created a crisis support team. Again, with the support of Mr. Phil Pot and the other principals at the school, we borrowed three of the counselors from the elementary school, school psychologists, learning directors from all, from all over campus, all over the district. And luckily, Ms. Sharp also has a counseling degree, so we, we put her into play as well. Um, accounting, mental health, and again, our kind of, our trump card was, uh, Jessica's House. They were incredible for us, absolutely incredible. Unfortunately, I believe it was Brad's first day full-time with Jessica's House that Tuesday. So, um, so he's been a great support to us. Ms. Dirksen followed Michelle's schedule for the two days so that she went into each class that Michelle would have been in to see, uh, make sure that the students, uh, had the, were taken care of if, if anybody had an incident or, um, needed some support. We also created a support room. And our conference room became a support room, B-seven, and, uh, anybody that needed to go talk and express their feelings in a different way. They had art supplies out there, uh, different way. They could have wrote a letter, they could have drawn their picture, they could have just wrote a saying on a roll of butcher paper that they rolled out on the table, just ways that they can kind of, um, express how they were feeling. We didn't want to tell the students how to feel. We wanted them to be able to express it in, in their own way. Um, we set up a protocol for our staff because a lot of times our students come to our teachers when things don't go well over the weekend, they meet our teachers at seven thirty, seven forty-five in their classroom. These needs were too deep for a classroom teacher to be able to say, this is what you should do. So we put a protocol in place that, um, the teachers were able to listen to the student if they brought up concerns, but when they were done sharing the concerns, they, they would give the student three options. One is, do you need to see a counselor? Because we had every office loaded with a counselor and we also had a group room. The second was, stay in class. Maybe sometimes they just need to say it and then they're okay. And the third option was, do you need to call your parents to come get you? We did not want any student to be ever left alone during that time. So those were the three things that we asked the teachers, and if they needed to see a counselor, it was a call right to the office and the campus supervisor came and got the student, brought them to the office again, so that no student was alone during that time. In the four days, all band classes were supported, so we always made sure someone was out there. Uh, one of the days, Jessica's House just brought a whole bunch of sidewalk chalk, and you would think that high school kids are too old for sidewalk chalk. They, they did incredible. So, um, they created some wonderful pieces out there on, on the sidewalk. And again, just got a chance to, uh, play games and talk, and they have some games that generate talk and, um, they have the Jenga cubes, that if you pull a Jenga cube, you have to answer the question on it. So it kind of forces them to talk about some things. Um, we also had to put a protocol in, in for staff because we have a lot of staff members that are connected to her. We have a tight community that are connected to her family. And our protocol to the staff was, yes, you can grieve on campus, but we need to make sure students are covered. So if you need coverage, call Kellet, Ms. Sharp, or I, we'll make sure your position is covered. And then we had a room for staff to be able to just go and, and kind of get away for a little bit. So that was put into place also. So we were trying to take care of adults, we're trying to take care of kids also. Um, we served between, um, B-seven and individual counseling, in those four days, we were able to counsel eighty-three students in those four days with all the support, again, that was given to us by the other sites and, um, and our district. We made referrals to outside agencies and we made lots of parent contacts. One of the big keys to us being able to inform our parents, I'm not sure if you guys received the parent squares or not, but anytime I sent a parent square, it was with the permission of the, uh, Taylor family. We absolutely got their permission each time we sent it out. And I think on the second days when I got permission to inform our parents of what, what, what really happened. So just today, we had a follow-up from Dr. Vargas. She was a learning director at Patterson a few years ago, when Patterson, I think they had three suicides, it kind of one after the other. And she kind of walked us through the steps they took afterwards and, um, and kind of the things that they need to look out there, certain things that are coming up when, certain anniversaries, when, uh, Michelle's birthday comes up, that's going to be a hard time for some of our kids that were really close to her. So we need to know what that is. There's a lot of things, and there's a lot of kids that are connected that we need to check in with. So we're going to do those things. We are trying to find as many people that know the right thing to do so that we can do that for our students. Um, many people have said, oh, we need, I, I, from the community, and, and they're trying to grieve in their own way and try to offer advice in their own way as well, but they've said that we've need to have an assembly. And everything, even the target solutions tells us, you don't do the school-wide assembly. You need this individual student needs, and that's what we're, that's what we're trying to reach. Because a lot of times in the assembly, you, you get the big assembly, you get emotions and you think by running the assembly, you're meeting their needs, but you don't know who's struggling because there's nine hundred kids in the room. So really, we need to know the individual basis and get them the support. Um, a few things I do want to say, I do want to say thank you to my staff and students. They've been incredible through this. I want to thank the Taylor family. I don't know that I could have been as giving as they were during this time. Um, they had an open casket on Saturday and, uh, and my sis, my daughter is, is a friend of Michelle's, and she wanted to kind of walk up on her own, so I followed a little bit behind. And, um, Tracy found me and she started trying to comfort me. So that's just the kind of family or person she is and, uh, and, and she did say something to me that, uh, I was able to share to my staff. Because you always wonder, could you have done more? Is there something you could have done? And she shared with me that, um, that morning, Saturday morning, that she received back all the stuff from the sheriff, because it was an investigation, and the sheriff returned all of her belongings. And, um, and she says she went through everything and there was nothing in her writings or, uh, any of her belongings that said that she was having a hard time at Orstemberg. There was nothing that any students were giving her a bad time. It was that, um, she had some things that she was dealing with that she couldn't quite get a grasp on, and she was having that struggle herself. So, um, so she, and again, here she is, and it's the service, and she's trying to comfort me. So I just, I couldn't thank her enough. Um, students of, at Orstemberg have been amazing, so again, we have a great community. Um, Mr. Phil Pot, thank you for your support and leadership through this. It was, yeah, I can be there, I'll be there in a couple hours, I'll see you there. And that was it, there was no questions asked. I, he could have been doing, probably was doing something important that his family may need for him, but not one person asked, do I really need to be there? Everybody dropped what they were doing with their family and showed up. Um, one of the person, people that was instrumental to us and actually helping our admin team take care of ourselves as well through this is, uh, Brad Quillen, and he's from Jessica's House. And one of the things that he didn't just say, but he did, he says, we're here to come alongside you and help you great, through the grieving process and to basically love your students, love your staff, and help you. And they've done nothing but that, and they've been incredible. So, um, I know Brad, uh, on Friday, we provided lunch, and he may gave a message to the, um, to the students that, uh, to the teachers that day, and I thought it would be important in this, uh, for the, the community to hear what he had to say as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Pruitt. Uh, name is Brad Quillen, and I'm the chaplain at Jessica's House. I've been there for seven years, part-time, and, uh, Tuesday, I came on full-time, and Monday night, I received a call from Renee Chance, who's one of the high school teachers, and then, uh, gave Justin a call, we go back some years. Uh, so we got involved, uh, in the events that happened, uh, last weekend, uh, and brought a team of people out this week, uh, to just touch base, first of all, to meet with, uh, Justin and his admin team in his office and just kind of start, how do you walk through this in day one? And bring in some resources along from, uh, the people that spend their life doing this across the country and just trying to equip them and understand what's step one, what's step two, what's step three. Uh, and so, one of the things that we first started to talk about was, uh, when something like this happens, at Jessica's House, we do, uh, peer support, uh, for those that have lost a, a family member. And so we do this every day, and we walk into schools about every month, whether a teacher's passed away or students passed away, and walk with schools, I do this. And that's my full-time job, is what I do. I come along schools and, and businesses and places of that nature and the community that need, need assistance through this. And so, one of the things that we wanted to share with staff as we got started with students that we met with was, when things like this happen, there's an emotion that starts to happen in our, in our heart and that grief and those anger and the frustration with some of that, and that emotion needs motion. And so we started to brainstorm some ideas of, as those kids start to feel those emotions, they start to get too much, how can we help them express that, whether it be, when they, uh, went to B-seven, when they just had conversation, when we did as simple as sidewalk chalk. I know that sounds, you know, childish, but there's something about those emotions just getting out, and so we started to talk about that in the first twenty, thirty minutes as we sat in the office together. I was impressed because we walked over to B-seven after about an hour of conversation with some of the staff, and I was really impressed that they already had a place set up and protocol in place for students to be excused from class to go and start doing some of those things. Normally, we walk into a school, we start helping them put those resources together, so I just want you to know, my hat's off to you guys and what you did. There was a number of fifty-one-fifty cases you had, uh, throughout, uh, Tuesday and Wednesday, and Justin called me Wednesday afternoon and just said to me, hey, is this normal? And I said, well, the, the volume, I would probably say, is probably not normal from what we've run into, but what I would say to you is, your kids are turning to you. You've created, you've created a safe place for your kids to come, uh, and their teachers, and the counseling office, uh, at your school. And so take that as solemn. I know it's not easy and it's overwhelming, and that was one of his comments, that we're taxed as a small school, we're taxed as a police department, but I want you to know, they're coming to you because they trust you. So Mr. Phil Pot, my hat's off to you from staff, you've created board, I just want you to know, uh, our week there doesn't end. We'll be back, we'll be back for weeks and months to come, especially with those kids that were close to her. And to work through the next months with them, just how do you get through this? How do you walk through this? How do you mourn? So with that, I just wanted to say that, as I said that to the staff on Friday, those that came for lunch, I'm impressed with what you had and what you've been doing. And so with, uh, that, we'll be back, and we want to be a part of this community and help you walk through the hard days ahead to heal and to move on. So thank you for letting us be a part of, of this time out here.
Thank you for all your help. And Mr. Pruitt, thank you, and Mr. Phil Pot. We have an amazing district in many ways, and I think this is a big part. Thank you. Okay. Um, next is school of the month, and it's the after-school program. Oh, sorry, I turned the page.
That we approved the agenda as published?
Second. I seconded.
Are you guys leaving or are you staying?
Rose and Ed, Paul and then Rose?
Paul and then Rose.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Sorry, after-school program.
Thank you very much. Hello, how are you? So this is the overview of two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year as of, uh, so far, what we have. So just some pictures from the K-five sites. Bonita, we are funded for eighty-four. Our district cap is one-ten. We have enrollment of a hundred and thirteen. There is no one on the waiting list as we take, um, all the students there. Hunt, we have funded for eighty-four. District cap is one-forty. We have a hundred and twenty in the program at that site. Um, that is slowly increasing, but we do not have a waitlist. Barrington is eighty-four. District cap is one-forty. Enrollment is one-thirty-five. We have nineteen on the waitlist, and I'll address the waitlist in, in just a second. Vaughn Renner is one-fifty-one. District cap is one-sixty. Enrollment is one-sixty-three, and we have forty on the waitlist. This was done a week prior, but we have hired three new leaders to move those students off the waitlist and into the program with help from the district. So those numbers have changed, and we have, uh, just a few students that are waiting to come into the program. So this is our K-five schedule. Um, the regular day leaders take attendance, snack, homework help, outside free play, enrichment activities, free time, and then program closes at six. Uh, most of the schedule is the same, except minimum days, we have a rotation of activities, um, to keep the students engaged, so there's not so many of them and, or downtime. Um, we had to change the early release policy from last year due to, um, our audit. Um, just a few working, we weren't allowed to keep them in the program for a certain amount of time. We, um, we just say that we would like them to stay for the entirety of the program to get the full benefit, but they are able to be picked up at any time with these eight codes marked. So as long as the, the parent marks one of those codes, then, um, C D E is, is good to go with us. This is our Y O L O schedule. We have a hundred and ninety-eight students enrolled at Y O L O A S P as of right now. Um, two forty-eight, three, check-in, restroom, water. Um, three to four, we have sessions before snack, arts and crafts, we have a homework club, um, science activities, any kind, we have a gaming, that is, that students love, all of this, um, goes on. And then the, we have snack from four to four fifteen, the bus arrives, and then we have more sessions after snack, some of the same things. Students can finish up their arts and crafts projects, we have sewing, um, just what my leaders like to do, we kind of incorporate that into a session. And then cleanup and program closes. And it's similar for the rest of the early release and minimum days. The sessions just go a little bit longer for the students. And then these are O H S, um, activities, before-school tutoring, open gym, weight room, war paint, which is art club, um, film club, comic book club. We had a great turnout at the, um, Club Rush that they have, and students have been signing up, they always love the cooking. Video games is always a, a hot topic, and then after-school tutoring, which we have. And that's all that I have.
Oh, thank you.
Any questions?
No. I'm getting comfortable with this, dude. You're doing a great job.
You have a wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Children don't say, I don't want to go. We have a new student board member, Starlinne Calendez. Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Um, I'm a senior at Orstemberg. I like art, my favorite class is Mr. Lane's O-Two class. Um, I wasn't ready for this.
I know. I apologize.
Um, yeah, I'm really enjoying senior year so far. It's really exciting, it's stressful, but I'm looking forward to a lot of success, you know, within the year.
We're looking forward to reports each month also. Mr. Snotterly, did you? No. Okay. Thank you, Starlinne. Okay, attendance, please.
Do you have, I'm just kind of, so, yeah, I think she has, yeah. This is her first meeting, so we've got to make sure we prompt her a little bit, so.
We have to put it away. Yeah. Sorry, sit down. Yeah. Yes, thanks.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to introduce myself as, uh, this school year's board representative. My name is Starlinne Calendez, and I am a senior at Orstemberg High School. Normally, I would discuss the usual activities and events that take place on campus, but today is different. Last Monday, Michelle Taylor passed away. Her, her death deeply affected Orstemberg and the community as a whole. I would like to thank O H S and the district for the resources they have provided the school in the wake of this tragedy. Mental health clinicians, our current counselors, and even our vice principal, Mrs. Sharp, are on call whenever students need care and support. It is still not certain as to what caused Michelle to take her own life. I know she'd you want to make any assumptions about what Michelle is going through. There have been speculations that bullying may have affected Michelle. On behalf of Orstemberg High School, I want to assure all who may be concerned that my school does not have a bullying problem. The majority of students, including myself, would bring it to staff's attention if we seen or heard about any bullying issues. Something that I do want to make you aware of is mental health problems within many people. These are the individuals who are at a higher risk for suicidal thoughts and actions. Other, other factors such as prolonged stress, isolation, agitation, or a history of trauma or abuse can push someone to want to take their own life. At the end of the day, each one of these possible reasons can have long-lasting negative effects on one's emotional and mental state. A lot of people around my age can agree that it can be embarrassing to try and reach out for help when they face these problems in life. We don't want people thinking that we're weak. I can tell you from experience, I lived with pain and sadness a year on my former memory months. It drove me to attempt suicide twice during my junior year. Through the constant treatment I received after both attempts, it was clearly how much my school cared about me. My teachers showed their caring rates, showed their caring rates when needed. My therapist was allowed to meet with me on campus every week. Ms. Sharp, though, even to this day, still checks on me to make sure my life is going okay. Unfortunately, it's simply too suicide attempts to realize that it is okay to ask for help, that people are always willing to help. My life shouldn't have gone to such a low place, but it did, and I want others to take through it, that they are not alone in this world. However big or small your problems are in life, they still matter. With that being said, I hope that Orstemberg can further provide us students with the necessary resources that we need. By starting a discussion about mental health awareness, we can educate and inform each other on how to lead ourselves and those around us to a healthy path in life. I stand here, well, sit here, I sit here representing every student who is not comfortable coming forth about their troubles, but I hope they know that they will find the courage to do so, and I hope it can change your life.
Starlinne, thank you very much. Yes. We're looking forward to your year. Um, attendance, please?
Good evenings. President Conforti, members of the board, Superintendent Phil Pot, um, want to celebrate some more positives. And before I do that, I also want to welcome Starlinne here as the student representative. Obviously, we placed in that chair for a reason, and now we know why. Good luck to you this year. Um, I have the privilege of presenting our first report for the highest average daily attendance in August. Uh, the winner of the big green apple is Barrington Elementary School. For lowest chronic absenteeism, we have Bonita. On behalf of the academy, I will be accepting her. Uh, and the one that I love, and I, the, the first time I sat in this boardroom, um, I went back to my former district when I was still working there, and I said, you guys ought to start doing this, recognizing staff attendance, because our teachers in the classroom, our staff, our classified staff make all the difference in our, in our each day, uh, in our schools. And so to recognize folks for that, we definitely want to commend them. So for the highest percentage rate of staff attendance in the month of August, Vaughn Renner.
Citizen, I have.
Nothing wrong with it. Not that, that's okay.
Not that, that's okay. That's okay.
In your packet tonight is the annual report that the Citizens Oversight Committee put together, and it's basically, it's a recap of all the activity that occurred through the bond funds in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. We prepared the report, we looked at all the projects that we, that were completed, that were started, some had been started the year before, some finished up in this fiscal year, but we're going to claim them as last year. So we started out with just under five million dollars of bond funds, and we issued another five and a half million, the final of Measure P. So we had about ten, ten and a half million dollars to work with. Of that, we spent, in the fiscal year, we spent about three point one million, and we have another two point one million that's already set aside. So at the end of the year, when all is said and done with the list of projects that's in this report, we have about five point two million dollars remaining of these bond funds. So completed or in progress were the projects of Benita. We did, we configured the office and replaced the panels on the windows that were not energy efficient. We completed the Barrington library, which was a huge accomplishment, I still think it's going to be a round building when I see it. We did two large air conditioning projects at Vaughn Renner and Hunt, replacing the HVAC units and the bar units with the bar units are on the portables. And then we re-roofed pretty much the entire campus at Orstemberg. We did the dugouts at the varsity baseball and softball fields at the high school, and we did irrigation project with, if you remember, in front of the Long Road Portables in the back, there was a big dirt lot, and we were able to saw that over, add irrigation, so now it's a nice, big, grassy area, and the kids aren't tracking dirt through those portable classrooms, running out the carpet. We have begun work, preliminary work on the YOLO classroom room, and we'll be working on that more this year and to get ready to go out to bid for that. So the last page is a summary of all the funds, how much each project costs, and whether or not it's completely finished, or if there's still work, what we call work in progress, that's a kind of an audit term, means we started in one year, finished in the other year, we have to claim that as an asset. So each, that last page has a breakdown for each project of the cost. And if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them, but it's, that one's pretty well detailed. So on behalf of the committee, I just wanted to present the report for you, and we'll have the audit report probably in December or January, they'll finish the bond audit report.
Thank you, Mrs. Mendez.
Are there any questions?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you. First reading of BP one three one two point three Uniform Complaint Procedures, BP and AR three three two oh Claims and Actions Against the District, BP oh zero four one five Equity, BP fourteen hundred Relations Between Other Governmental Agencies and the Schools, BP two two one oh Administrative Discretion Regarding Board Policy, BP three five one five point two one Unmanned Aircraft Systems, Drones, BP three five five three Free and Reduced Price Meals, and E five one two five point one Release of Directory Information. That's our homework. Action items, consent calendar. The consent calendar items are routine in nature and usually do not require board discussion. Individual items may be removed by board members and presented for discussion in separate action. The consent calendar will be adopted by a roll call vote. I make a motion that we accept the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
Mrs. Hurst?
Aye.
Mr. Snotterly?
Aye.
Mr. Bizar is absent, and Mrs. Conforti votes aye. Five, six, uh, four oh, one absent. Approve resolution number eighteen dash nineteen slash oh one Adopting the GON Limit.
Mrs. Mendez?
There's not really a lot of discussion on this one, actually, because it's just a required, required report that's related to Prop thirteen as well, sets a limit on revenue, so. It does require, actually, unless you need a further explanation, it does require a motion to approve.
Yep. Motion to approve this.
Did you have a report that you were giving to Mrs. Mendez?
Not for, not for the gambling. Okay. The gambling is just a part of the unaudited actuals, and it just basically says that we're not going to be over-appropriated based on Prop thirteen.
I mean to approve.
I second it. Okay, Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
Mrs. Hurst?
Aye.
Mr. Snotterly?
Aye.
Mr. Bizar is absent, Mrs. Conforti votes aye. Four zero one. Approve two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen audited actuals.
Okay, unaudited actuals is just a report that summarizes the whole year of two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, from July first to June thirtieth. So this was a very robust year that we had last year. We started with just under five million dollars of beginning balance, and we ended with five point four million. We got a little more revenue than we expected, but we bumped up our expenditures to kind of keep pace with that, but we ended about half a million dollars above where we started, which is good because we've been bringing down the fund balance, it's nice to build it back up. So of that five point four million dollars, this is the breakdown of how, of what that balance is made of. Part of that is restricted, meaning it's program money that can't be used for anything but that. We do have a little bit of money that we keep carrying over from, through the old ROP funding, and we have, the state has been giving us mandate reimbursements in the form of one-time funds, so we have to designate those out separately as well. So a lot of the reserve is tied up just with those. We have the PARs payment, which is the Early Retirement Incentive that we have, we have a couple more years to go on that. And then we have some, we have some staffing needs that we think will be needing during the year, so we'll put aside some funding to bring in additional staff. But we still are well above our eight percent reserve. So of the general fund, the whole general operating fund, this is not including the building funds or any of the capital funds, the breakdown of where the money went was we had seventy-two percent of the budget was salaries and benefits. If you just take the unrestricted dollars, that number goes up to eighty percent, and that's a big jump from the year before because of, we had some salary increases, and we also had, the person stores kind of made a big jump last year. So we see that our, the total percent of our budget going to salaries and benefits is increasing. So the revenue, we can see the revenue, about eighty-three percent of that comes from the LCFF, and this year, we are fully funded, so they did, they bumped it up last year so they could get us to the four hundred percent this year. But you can see, what we do are categorical programs, they make up a very small amount of that. So our enrollment and our ADA continue to increase. We increased about a hundred and thirty students last year to, and since two thousand nine, we've grown over a hundred, over four hundred students, which is really remarkable. I think when I started in two thousand one, we had just over two thousand students. So in the other funds, Cafeteria did well better than I expected, so we did just over two million dollars in revenue and had one point nine million in expenditures, so that's, that was good, that we're building that reserve back up as well. In our building fund, we have, this shows the actual ending balance, it isn't taking into account the work in progress. So the actual working funds that we'll have after all the projects that are in motion right now are completely, will be closer to five point two million. In our Capital Facilities Fund, that's the fund where the developer fees come in, so we had a banner year last year, there was a lot of construction in town, both at Diablo Grande and here in Newman, and we brought in over a million dollars in developer fees, which we haven't seen that level in probably ten to twelve years. And then we, the expenditures that are noted there are basically debt service payments. So we'll be able to roll that over and, and maintain our COPs, you know, we're paying those down without having to worry about other, other means of paying those down. I don't know how that says. Okay, and then in our Facility Fund, we have a little bit of money left, we can apply to one of our projects coming up. And in our Foundation Fund, this is where the golf tournament funds go. So we brought in twenty-three thousand, and we spent about twenty thousand, so there's a little bit of carryover there. There's also some carryover from prior years, so we're getting the sites to spend down their golf funds. We also have, in this fund, we also have a scholarship fund that was set up quite, several years ago, it's probably been about ten or fifteen years ago, that money is sitting in there, too, so that's part of that balance. Our focus last year is still with the, is, was still the same, we're going, moving in one direction, and that's been really, really consistent. And so we planned our expenditures to support these areas. And what we did, this was the sixth full LCAP cycle, we got a lot of input from staff and community and students, and then we, we looked at where do we need to focus our needs, and we brought in more counselors, we brought in more support staff, more, focused more on English learners, and we're getting some results. We're, did, we implemented a new English Language Arts curriculum from TK eight, and we've increased our rate of English reclassifications, which is one of the largest rates in the county. We're increasing the number of the students that are meeting the A three G requirements, and the number of, the number of students that are completing the FAFSA to go, to go to school. And then we're continuing to meet our goals in most SBACK areas for ELA. Our pass rate for the AP exam went to thirty-seven percent, which is a large jump. So we've also continued a lot of professional development, we're working with the International Center, we continue that this year. We're working on the next generation science standards, working on professional development with math and with science, continuing to support new teachers and all teachers in the classroom. We've gotten a lot of really positive feedback on, every time that there's a staff development, we do, there's a survey that goes out, and we take that and we improve our practices, and it's improving the instruction in the classroom. And then the facility improvements, not just what was the Oversight Committee, but we did, we finished painting Orstemberg, we'd completed all the solar installations, we installed some more cameras at Vaughn Renner, painted the inside of the Hunt Gym, these are some of these, were from last summer, so these seem like a long time ago. We have carpet and classroom furniture on a replacement schedule, so every year we do several classrooms. We did roofing projects, and we will have some additional roofing projects this, this fall. We did all of the HVAC, we've had quite a few HVAC at Orstemberg, not site-wide, but on campus as well. We did, completed Benita, we did the turf, and we did a data upgrade for three new labs at Orstemberg. Does anyone have questions?
I just want to say that on the news recently, there was a school district that kind of had some financial problems, and I won't mention the name of it, but I would really like to see them put us on the news for being so solvent, because you have been so diligent in keeping us that way, and I really thank you, we appreciate that.
Thank you, takes a, takes a whole team, but.
They came a question over here.
Yes.
You need to come to the podium.
Come up, come up to the microphone, then everybody will be able to hear you, please, and state your name.
My name is Kagan Charvino, I'm from Orstemberg. I have questions about the labs. By three new labs, do you mean like three new, like, science teachers?
No, computer labs.
Computer labs, okay, I'm just.
Okay.
Computer labs, those are the data drops for the, the wiring, for the, that was a good question, though.
That's a great question, thank you.
Thank you, yes, thank you. The other thing is, Mr. Vargas, thank you for all your work, I know you were up in, all over the place this past summer, in all that heat, and thank your staff also. Okay. Thank you. Anything else? No, thank you for doing, breaking it down so that someone like myself, who is not the best of person, would have the numbers, here's the number person, but it really makes it a lot clearer than mud.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, may I have approval of the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen unaudited actuals?
So, second.
Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
Mrs. Hurst?
Aye.
Mr. Snotterly?
Aye.
Mr. Bizar is absent, and Mrs. Conforti votes aye. Okay, approves strategic action plan two thousand eighteen, two thousand, to two thousand twenty-one, Mr. Philpott?
Yeah, I'd like to just go over this briefly with you, I mean, and hopefully, briefly, I've, we've seen this for quite a while, and it started, you know, it started back in March when we had a board workshop, and which you all participated in. We kind of drafted some of the nuts and bolts of this, it went back out to staff for a while, we got input from staff through the end of last year and also over the summer. It's been reworked a couple times, it's, at the beginning, during the summer, actually towards the end of the summer, when I, we met with all the admin for the sites, they gave some input, and then they have implemented it into their own site plans. And some of you who attended actually the certificate of professional development, where Ray McNulty was our keynote, I presented this again, we certified, it got a little bit more feedback, but it pretty much is where it is, I think it's going to be for a while now. It's a three-year plan, and it is based on a lot of input from, from all stakeholders. So one of the things I just want to kind of point out, this is what you would see, actually, in the summary, is actually, in the suited action plan, is you'd see from two thousand eighteen, twenty-one, a vision and mission, some values which are very important in terms of supporting what that vision and mission are, and then some metrics, I'm going a little bit more detail here, but those values are based upon some things that you agreed upon. One is that we keep learners first, that we build on strong relationships, that we start with equality, but we move towards equity, meaning that everyone gets supported with the way they specifically need to be supported, but ultimately, that we're trying to remove the inequities that are, that are out there for all, for all students, so it's about justice. And then lastly, is that one of the, one of the values is purposeful learning environment, I think you'll see that when you go into the classrooms, we've been to a lot of classrooms already this, this school year, and I can tell you, there is purpose in what is, is what is being, being learned. So that all led to basically a vision that you all agreed on, that all learners graduate college and career-ready, embracing the joy of lifelong learning, all are prepared to be responsible global citizens and leaders, and so we've all been working on that in the sites as well. That is going to be achieved through the mission, which is through strong relationships, design and orchestrate relevant and rigorous experiences, and inspire and empower all learners. I mentioned the metrics, these are the metrics basically that is a board, that you need to continue to kind of serve, and we'll bring these back to you on occasion, we recognize some of these. Some of these are heavy and rigorous in terms of actually the high school, the exception of ELA SBACK and Math SBACK, which is actually more heavy, actually, on the, on the elementary side, which is given third grade through eighth grade. But what you are not seeing on this is actually, is the metrics that basically that teachers use on an ongoing basis, and that's really for teachers basically to, to go through this, without reading this, basically, these metrics are parameters that we use to guide business success as a district, but there's also affirmative assessments, which teachers use on an ongoing basis to change instruction and to provide intervention services. So some of the things that we have talked about in the past, we will be doing a workshop fairly soon, we're waiting for the embargo to be lifted on the cast results, as we do every year, if it doesn't happen by next meeting, we're just going to do probably a workshop with you anyway, to kind of go over some of these things. But DIBOS is, is a program that we use that identifies risk level for meeting reading outcomes, TK six. Stride is very effective in determining data that is needed to change instruction, not only in ELA, math, but also science as well. Footsteps to Brilliance is a, is a new app that we're using predominantly in our schools, it's from TK through now going to be third grade this year, but we're all. it's from TK through now going to be third grade this year, but we're also making an offering to, to those in the community that, that have preschool kids who are not, not even with us yet, to build vocabulary that is necessary to be, to be part of our district. ZERN is a math support program that, that helps with aligning with our Eureka math program. Benchmark Advanced and Adelante is the ELA curriculum that we use for TK5. And in all these, all the curriculum that we have, whether it's online or even, or even hard copy, there are a lot of formative assessment teachers, that teachers use on an ongoing basis, by grade level to, to make sure there's commonality, and then by secondary and secondary for commonality of, of, of these programs, to make sure that we're succeeding in these before, we're not waiting until the Sback test, which is more of a autopsy at that point, as opposed to really kind of using medical model here, really kind of being more preventive medically and stuff. So Studiesync has also done the sixth through eighth grade ELA curriculum that we're using, there's embedded formative assessments is there. So I just want to point that out, because although you're seeing the major parts of the metrics, these are what you see behind. Now what we have done is, and we're trying to figure out how to load it into the new website, is that the, on the website, if you go through the explore section, you would find the, this strategic action plan for 2018-21, and then behind that, or next to it, you will also see a glossary. This page that you see before you is part of that glossary. One of the things that's really important in education is, because we use a lot of acronyms, we use a lot of terminology that's not familiar to sometimes other educators, but most often to the community as a whole. We have defined those terms and those concepts in that glossary, which will be very, very helpful. So this is actually the page that kind of explains basically how metrics work. So I, I think I can tell you that already the sites are really moving forward with strategic action plan on their individual sites, and we're already seeing some good, some good learning and some good teaching happening at every site. So I would recommend that you approve this, this plan for the next three years.
One of the things that, that some people may not see, because of having these laid out and having almost like a roadmap, the idea that we've had four years of 100% graduation from high school, I think part of it has to do with this, we're all on the same page, somebody isn't doing their thing in another class, doing something else, we all have the same 55 miles per hour kind of part, and I think that's what we see with our graduations and college-bound students. Okay, approves strategic action plan 2018-2021, a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the strategic action plan for the years 2018 through 2021.
Second?
I'll second.
Mrs., Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
Mrs. Hurst?
Aye.
Mr. Snodderly?
Aye.
Mr. Bizar is absent, and Mrs. Conforti votes aye, 4-0-1. Okay, approve resolution 18-19/02, textbook sufficiency.
This is the usual requirement, that, that we provide sufficient textbooks through every grade level in every subject area across the district, and so this resolution, basically, after doing a survey of all of our sites, we do have adequate sufficiency, some of it means that we maybe ordered something, it's still on, still on its way, but everything has been accounted for.
How close are we getting to having many of our textbooks online? A parent asked me that, and I'm thinking, you know, they're saying, why do they have to carry these books around, and I said, well, we have to.
Well, part of the problem is, though, is that, is that because the, the standards have not been completely approved in various subject areas, you know, next generation science standards, that's relatively new, and so although we're doing a pilot actually at YOLO, and, and, I mean, that's, that's the biggest problem is, it's just that, is it, until everything becomes kind of available, it's, you just can't throw out the textbooks. And sometimes they're good actually as supplementals too, but some of the textbooks, for instance, the science are so old, and some of the, like the social sciences as well, social science has just approved the framework in the state, but the standards actually haven't been approved.
Okay.
So we have to wait until the state actually approves those standards before we can action, and then they're usually, the companies are usually a, a few years behind on development of virtual curriculum.
Is my understanding correct, that a lot of the textbooks that are out there online are, they're basically just the printing, they're not what you'd expect, a, a virtual textbook where you click on it and you see the Declaration of Independence and, and you know, you, what happened here, and it shows you a movie, you expect all that kind of linking, and they're also the same thing with the answers, and that that's not there yet. You have to have a textbook on a computer, but it's.
It's hidden, it's a little bit hit and miss. Yeah, I mean, I think that was originally the, the first reaction from publishing companies is, well, let's take our existing textbooks, just take a PDF of it, and that's virtual.
Right.
That's really not virtual. And so we're looking at products that are basically more interactive. I would say that Benchmark Adelante is, is very interactive, Studiesync at, at YOLO amplifies what we're using actually as a pilot for the science, that's very interactive. So we're trying to add those types of, of curriculum that are more interactive, not just, just a PDF of a textbook.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas. May I have a motion to accept, approve resolution 18-19/02, textbook sufficiency?
If you don't mind, instead of doing a full point of order, and to put you on the spot a little bit, Starlina, there's a board policy that actually gives you the right to, prior to any vote, express your opinion, and since this is about textbooks, that would be a great place for the students to say, oh my gosh, I don't know how they came up with, we have textbooks. You don't have to express anything, and we've been talking a lot about how to, how to help you be more involved without putting you on the spot for something you're not prepared for, and you're not prepared for this, so if you have an opinion that you'd like to express before we take a vote, you have a right to do that on anything we vote on. And so if there's ever something that comes up and you're like, you know, I don't think the students approve of that, or the students strongly approve of that, you have a right to express that, and so a little bit of training in on the spot, apologize for that.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second? I'll second that. Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
Mrs. Hurst?
Aye.
Mr. Snodderly?
Aye.
Mr. Bizar is absent, Miss Conforti votes aye, 4-0-1. Okay. Future agenda items, school of the month will be Von Renner, and the Williams Act report findings will come about, tells us how our buildings are, correct?
Ah, yes. Yes.
Safety plans, which will be coming, okay, and?
Wasn't sure if you wanted a definition of those, or?
No, no. I think we're already a couple steps ahead on all of those, but, Mr. Felpot?
Well, actually, in fact, actually, the Williams Act reports on, on the buildings have actually been completed, we just didn't get them in time to, to present at this board meeting, and we did as, very well. So for, one of the things I just want to say is, you know, I do want to thank Mr. Pruitt and, and really his staff and, and the entire district for kind of pulling together on, on, on this tragedy this last week. You know, it's, unfortunately, in my career, I've, I've, I've been principal where this has happened more than, more than not, and I have to say that this is the most professional group of individuals pulled together that I've ever experienced working with, and it's just a pleasure to work with people like this. And you know, I'll still say what I said when I first got hired as principal at Orstembah, and that is, is I was told that this is a very supportive community, that they're great kids, and you know what, I just, time after time, I'm just, it's just reinforced as to how supportive this community is and, and kids as well. I do want to, I did mention that we're waiting for the CASP to be unembargoed, and we would, we will do a report for you, probably schedule actually a workshop prior to the, to the next meeting, if that works for all of you. And if those, if that data isn't completely unembargoed at that point, I think we can talk in broad, broad strokes about how we're doing, I think overall, we saw some growth, we also saw some areas where we still need to improve on, but those are all addressed by the strategic action plan as well. And then finally, I, I don't want to take this away from you, Mr. Wallace, because I know you're, you're involved in the, in the trustee board for the county, but I know that you had, I had reached out to start leading, and I know you're going to invite her as well to the September 27th, if I'm saying that right, trustee dinner, so Starlina, we're hoping that you're going to be able to participate in, in that if at all possible. Doesn't cost you a thing.
Okay.
Another group that's hoping to bring students, student board members more involved in, in the presentation that night, there will be a presentation for teachers of the year, I believe, but the presentation that night's going to be from somebody talking about the changes in need of how we talk about marijuana with our students, you know, with that being legalized, it's really changed the dialogue on what we need to talk about, and so that's, that's what we're going to be dealing with.
Okay. Mr. Snodderly?
Yes, I just, want to talk to Mr. Pruitt, the rest of the staff here, it's like, I was an educator for like 30 years, and you plan, you try to plan for your day, and then the phone rings, and you just never know, you, you know, and I don't want to, we say whatever you said, but I commend you, you know, I've had kids die at my school from car wrecks, going, coming back from lunch, and I still, I mean, even when, when Mr. Felpot, I get a text from him on a Sunday, I know it's not good, you know, or Monday, you know, and I just want to commend the staff and everyone in the district and the community. I mean, I've never seen such a, a group of people that can come together so fast and help our kids, and I just want to commend all of you for doing that.
Mrs. Hurst?
Oh, yeah. Okay, first off, Mr. Snodderly, there's a two-plus-two scheduled for Wednesday, we'll be meeting with the city, so I just want to let you know, and I'll do a report at the next meeting.
Hold, hold on.
Okay. No. Okay. Okay, Michelle was part of our, of our fire family. So I have been tremendously involved with all of this, and I can't compliment too enough, okay? The entire staff, everyone in this community did a phenomenal job, and I watched quite a few students on Saturday, and they were clinging to each other, and it was great to see, and so I really can't say anything other than, this is suicide prevention week, so let's all think about that, and thank you very much.
Mr. Wallace?
Obviously, you know, this is where we are this week, and thinking about our staff and our family and, and our, our group, I'm, I'm very proud that over the past few years we've been looking at the mental health of our kids and, and adding staff that were available there. Obviously, what a great job that everybody's done. Other stuff that's going on right now is that we've got this upcoming meeting that we just talked about, where we'll be, certainly drugs are part of mental health, and this is all part of mental health. At some point or another, we probably need to get back to our state and talk about getting the appropriate, we, we see mental health problems around us all the time now, whether it be with homelessness, or, or the opioid crisis, or drug abuse of every other kind. And it's time to get some, some backup. We sit it there and we scratch, and we say, we, we've got to pull this out of our budget because our students need it, but is it the school's place to, to supply it, and it's probably not, but, and we need to keep pushing, we need to make sure that there's some place for students to go out here, and, and I'm proud to have been part of that so far.
Starlina, do you have anything that you would like to add? You don't have to. Okay. Lastly, thank you, students, thank you, parents, thank you, staff, for everything for this week. One other thing, and you won't hear, one other time after this, guess what? Anybody have any idea what's coming up?
The golf tournament.
The golf tournament. Well, you have monies in there, and you have to spend it, but we also have to have people play, so please come and play, it's a lot of fun, food, you can throw the ball if you have to. Okay, have a good night, have a great week, and keep safe and sound.
And if you have a student to come play, there's an awful lot of people that are willing to cough up for their entry fee.
Yes. Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn? I make a motion, but we're due. A second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, have a good evening.